Eternal God our Father, we come today with an attitude of gratitude. We want to say thank you for affording us this opportunity to be accounted for here in the land of the dying and on our way to the land of the living. We ask for forgiveness of all our transgressions and iniquity. Master, as we come today, we ask your blessing upon this council meeting. We lift up our mayor, Master Andy Stimson, and his entire cabinet, C. Archer Small in this city council, and even our county commissioners here in the City of Mobile. Master, we pray that you will once again continue to intervene on our behalf, touch these city officials, master, as they try to do their best to make decisions that would help better our city. Oh God, we just thank you, you've done it before, and we know you are able and capable of doing it again. Please, our Father, just have mercy upon each and every one of us. It's in your name we pray and we act. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory, Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our September 6th meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, please at this time put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, indicating the appeal of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express and address must be identified and pertain to the City of Mobile business. And a person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was sounded to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the counselor, there will be to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the decorum, there will be no undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of August 30th.
They're properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everybody this morning. Appreciate you being here. Just have one announcement and then a couple of proclamations. Announcement has to do with a public workshop on September 13th at the Harmon Thomas Community Center regarding Brookley by the Bay project. If you have any interest in expressing your feelings or beliefs of what Brookley by the Bay should ultimately look like, we would ask that you to please come to the Harmon Thomas Community Center, that's September 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30, to express yourself so that we can make sure that we're getting the citizen input that's required to make sure that it's a, going to ultimately be a great park. At this time, I would ask those who are here for the National Recovery Month to please So I have a proclamation that I'm going to read almost in its entirety, okay? But it has to do with the National Recovery Month, and we all know the significance and the challenges that every community has in facing individuals with those issues. So it says, whereas National Recovery Month is an international observance held every September to educate people about how substance use and mental health services can enable individuals and their families to live healthy and rewarding lives, and whereas the observance celebrates the millions of people in recovery from mental health and substance use issues, reminding us that behavioral health is an essential component of overall health. Treatment and recovery services for mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is effective, and people can and do recover in our area and around the nation. Whereas addressing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is essential to achieve any healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, we must encourage relatives and friends and people with mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders to implement preventive measures, recognizing the signs of the problem. And whereas to help more people with lived experiences achieve and sustain recovery, faces and voices of recovery favor, invite all residents of Alabama to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim September 22nd as National Recovery Month in the City of Mobile. Thank y'all very much.
Good morning. Thank you very much. We're very grateful on behalf of the more than 20 million people in America with long-term recovery. It means a great deal to all of us. Thank you.
The next proclamation has to do with National Suicide Prevention Week, and is Lydia Barber, Lori Evans. So the proclamation reads, whereas suicide remains the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, and whereas in the United States, over 47,000 people died by suicide in 2019, and whereas suicide rates have increased 30% over the last two decades, with suicide rates finally decreasing 2.1% between 2018 and 2019, and whereas it is estimated that in 2019, there were 1.38 million suicide attempts, and suicide was the 12th leading cause of death in Alabama, and whereas in 2019, 804 people died by suicide in Alabama, and whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized as treatable, and whereas organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide or who struggle, now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim September 4th through September 10th, 2022, as National Suicide Prevention Week in the City of Mobile.
I want to thank y'all so much for this proclamation, and thank you, Mayor Stimson and City Council. And we do have a walk in Daphne on October 23rd, from 1:00 to 4:00 in front of Daphne City Hall. It's our 12th year, and we'd love to see you there. And I just want to thank you so much for allowing us to be here, and thank you. And I also want to give Mayor Stimson a T-shirt. Hope, that's what it's all about. It's about hope.
Adoption of the agenda?
One second, City, Madam City Clerk. For the ones that are suicide preventions, excuse me, I think some council member has some questions. Sorry about that. Wanted the council member to have a question. Is there's like a suicide prevention telephone number that citizens can call or?
Well, it's 988 now. It's amazing that they've changed the 1-800 to number. It's now 988. It was just passed on July 16th, so they do not have to remember that very long number. And 988, 24/7, 365 days a year, you get a trained counselor that will answer, will help you and answer any questions you actually have. So, huh? You can text to 988 also.
Oh.
So you can talk or text to 988. And there's also a crisis text line that is home to 741741. So those are the two major resources that are out there.
Do you have like a PDF, like on a flyer that you can send to our City Clerk office?
Oh, absolutely. I have a whole bunch in my car.
Yeah. If you could email it to our City Clerk office.
Absolutely.
We can share with our constituents, and that would be great.
I'd love to, and I have some bookmarks here, too. I'm just going to leave them.
Just leave it with our City Clerk.
And the walk bit is in Daphne, is the South Alabama Walk. So that covers Mobile and Baldwin County. It is not just a Baldwin County walk or a City of Daphne walk. That is the South Alabama Walk.
That's where I live, and I started it 12 years ago with a couple of other friends who lost loved ones also in the same amount of time. So, but it's for everybody, and we have a lot of people that come from Mobile.
That's our walk.
All right. Thank you so much.
But I'll get posters, yes. I will.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda?
Second. They're properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on October 10th in Spanish Plaza, October 15th on South Reed Avenue, and November 19th in Public Safety Memorial Park.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Appeals pass us.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider adoption of the 2022-2023 General Fund Capital and Convention Center budgets.
This is the public hearing for the particular said item. If anyone present that would like to address the council, you may do so by coming down to the podium and stating your name and your address.
I'm Ronald Hunt. I reside at 7 North Fulton Street, Mobile, Alabama 36607. With no respect to you, disrespect to you, Councilmember Small or Vice President Gregory, I really remiss or remorseful that Levon Manzey isn't sitting there. I found him to be a remarkable person. I'd just like to publicly extend my condolences for his loss. I usually talk about the budget because I'm a disabled person, as you can see, with my tremor, with a master's degree in economics is one of the things I do to entertain myself with since I don't work. I wanted to discuss the budget today. I'm not representing anyone other than myself in what I've kind of kept over the last couple of years focusing on how the budget has changed. And we have obviously had a better year than the budget was estimated. Sales revenue as well as expenditure by the government, and at the last finance meeting last week, was the last financial report that Mr. Holt gave to you last week, he stated that there was $73 million unencumbered amount of money where sales tax was over expenditure and government has spent less than was allocated. And I'm smart enough to know some of that money is needed for a city animal shelter, which we desperately need, and some of it's needed to spend on the civic center y'all were discussing this morning in pre-council. So I don't think we should spend all $70 million, but I think there are some things over the last couple of years that have taken reductions, that might at least be considered a one-time budget, if not commitment totally to the future, just to make them whole for some of the sacrifices they've made and for some of the difficulties we're having with inflation. And of course, right now, gas is going down, so the price of gasoline is going down, but a lot of these agencies and nonprofit organizations have had their budgets drastically affected by this, and I think it might be good to take $3 million of that unencumbered budget and distribute it to some of the people that are needing our assistance. I'm thinking some of the things that I think are important that I've noticed over the last couple of years. I know both Oakley and the Mobile Botanical Gardens that are city-owned property have had requests for increased funding, and if we have some unencumbered funds right now, I think that would be helpful. I personally am involved with the Food Pantry at Central, or Love All Pantry, and we're also involved with Driftwood Housing Project, and those projects are very important for people that are dealing with inflation or with food insecurity or with homelessness. And since we did not keep 15 Place open, I can think of no better way than to try to find some funding for Driftwood Housing Project, is trying to build micro housing for the chronically homeless. And Elizabeth is going to speak to you a little bit later about homeless issues. You know, I often wonder what happened to the African-American archives. Levon Manzey and Mercia Ludgood were working on a contract to get that reopened. To my knowledge, the building still sits over there empty. I think a lot of the emphasis has been put on the slave ship that they found, the Cotilda and the visitor center up there, but we're letting that facility over on Davis Avenue just sit empty, to the best of my knowledge. And I think it would be good for the city to make that a priority, to try to get that reopened. I've spoken about the animal shelter, mental health. We have had some progress lately in the crisis stabilization unit, and some of the new beds they're going to be putting here in Mobile. But you know, Malte Point took about a $400,000 reduction about five or six years ago, seven years ago. It might be good just to at least give them a once-in-time increase again for some money because mental health is probably the most difficult thing that young people are dealing with today, and if we have $73 million more than we anticipated, I think we could support mental health in some ways. I think also the wave transit probably has been affected by the increase in rising gas prices and some money just to help offset the cost of operations due to the increase in the cost of diesel would be a good use of some of that money that we have. The Friends of the Mobile Trees have been talking about we need an additional urban forester, and last year, I posed the question, there was a reduction in urban forestry, and I think maybe that's something we should concern with ourselves with this money. There's a lot of different things, you know, the public works employees, they didn't get a budget, they got incentive. I mean, they didn't get a raise, they got an incentive. Maybe you look at some ways to make them whole in that, even though everybody's getting a 2.5% raise now. And I guess I'm out of time. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you.
William Erickson. Following William Erickson is Bajah Wilson.
William Erickson, President of the Mobile Firefighters Association. My address is 433 Jan Drive, Fairhope, Alabama. As President of the Mobile Firefighters Association, I represent the majority of the firefighters with the City of Mobile. Over 250 professional firefighters are in our organization. And we came here earlier in the year with some issues that we addressed that were related ultimately to, I think, shortcomings we have with the competitiveness of our career, and it's affected our applicant pool, it's affected our retention. So there were some decisions made after we came to address the council earlier in the year that we were glad to see the city minimum wage go up to 1522 for city employees, but 56-hour firefighters were excluded from that. So our base hourly for a 56-hour firefighter is 1427 an hour. I think that's, that's pretty sad in today's market. We're facing 9% inflation, so I really don't think a 2.5% merit raise is even going to maintain the status quo. And right now, the status quo is, as of today, we've lost 29 firefighters to resignation this year and six to retirement. So to me, for a competitive department, those numbers are basically flipped. We've got, we're on track to lose 10% of our firefighters this year, and that kind of turnover rate and the fact that only six have retired is showing me this is ceasing to be a career department, and that's a fundamental problem for what services and response we're able to as professionals offer to the city. So when I look at $160 million is listed in the budget that we had in February after the $30 million for the airport. We see a lot of good things happening in Mobile, a lot of good decisions being made, but we think there's definitely room with surpluses in budget and the reserve fund to provide a genuinely sustainable professional career path for our firefighters and all public safety employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bajah Wilson.
Good morning, Council. My name is Bajah Wilson. I reside at 1000 O'Shelled Road. I am here today on, I'm here today on behalf of Groundwork Mobile County. I'm their executive director. I'm here to seek continued support from the council and to get your consideration for placing us into the budget to continue our nonprofit programming. Just to let you know, and first and foremost, I do want to thank you guys for acknowledging our Green Team back in July for the work and service that they've done in the community parks and neighborhoods across Mobile. Just to give a little bit of context to not only you all, but to the general public, Groundwork Mobile County Green Team is our signature youth program that provides part-time paid internship opportunities to Mobile County youth throughout the year. The program aims to educate participants on the local environment and its needs while providing on-the-job training opportunities and exposure to environmental and environmentally connected career pathways. The program utilizes accommodation of work, service, educational, and recreational components to complete yearly projects and tasks. Just to give you some base facts about what we have been able to accomplish, at least within the past year and a half, and kind of piggybacking on the meeting from July as far as our park stats, last summer, excuse me, last summer, the crew was able to collect over 1,660 pounds of litter and trash and keep it out of our waterways with a crew of seven. This summer, we were able to keep 3,033 pounds of litter and trash out of our waterways with a crew of 10. So again, we're asking for your continued support from a financial standpoint and to also continue to be an ally and a partner with you all in order to keep our parks and our waterways clean. In addition to doing that, we do a lot of work within the Africa Town community. We community garden, we help keep a lot of our gardens clean with Mobile Urban Growers. We also have worked with the city with canvassing the neighborhoods of the Africa Town area to educate our fellow residents about brownfields. Also, other programming that we do as well in partnership with our community partners are installing rain barrels throughout the city and county for residents who are experiencing significant flooding and stormwater runoff during our many rain events. So in closing, why should you support Groundwork Mobile County? First is to allow Groundwork Mobile County sufficient time to develop and grow so that we continue to do good work and help transform our communities that we serve, to help educate Mobile County youth and the public on environmental concerns and raise awareness to increase environmental conservation efforts and stewardship within our city, thirdly, to provide youth with job opportunities and serve as a workforce development tool. This program can and should provide a pipeline of future employers, employees, excuse me, to the City of Mobile and other job employment opportunities. Also, being a Groundwork Mobile and also being a trust, one of 22 trusts across the United States, we can leverage grants through our connection to Groundwork USA, the National Park Service, and Environmental Protection Agency to continue to assist the city with environmental efforts and cleanups. Groundwork can also aid certain departments, such as Little Patrol with probably rotational cleanups, and provide maintenance and support along trails such as the Three Mile Creek Trail and the historic Whistler Bike Trail in Preacher. So again, we are asking for your due consideration and including us into your budget this year.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Herr.
I was unaware that they were going to be here today, but this is the performance contract that I asked that was missing. I think it was an annual allocation of $60,000. It wasn't very much. I don't know, I saw your response the other day. I don't know if you found a way to?
Well, there are a couple of options we can look at, and I was going to talk to you about this later on today.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Okay. And then, once we look at it, if we find a way, we can report back to them without drawing out the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Jennifer Prince, followed by Sylvia Reed.
Greetings. My name is Jennifer Prince, and I'm the youth program coordinator. My address is 320 Stanton Road. And just hearing that address, you know that's Tricentennial Park, and I'm here to represent and also advocate for the Green Team. The Green Team is a set of youth ages 14 to 28. And the reason I'm standing here today is to make sure that the Green Team, Groundwork Mobile County, is still a factor, is still significant, still makes an impact. Our mission is to change lives and to change places. We live here in Mobile County, and living here in Mobile County, being raised here, coming back here, and raising our children here, we've taught these children how to think, and that means with, when we introduce them to our environment and how we need to take care and love our city, we're teaching our youth. We're teaching them about the careers that are in the city, how they can continue to be a part of the city. And without the funding, that diminishes our ability to partner and also to collaborate with projects around the city. We see this city as growing. You guys have made some amazing decisions coming back from, coming back from Texas. I see that decisions are being made to progress this city. Groundwork Mobile County, the Green Team, will help sustain those efforts. And just revitalizing the areas that are in Mobile, I know that the public works, works very hard, and just as Bajah stated, we are the gap, and we want to continue to be that gap that makes a difference, that changes these places, and to let the city know that we are visible, we make an impact by leading by example. When other people see the kids or our youth doing well, leading by example, we've noticed that other people doing kind. For example, underneath Dog River Bridge, it's not a place where there's garbage cans or anything like that, but it's a place where people come to recreate, people go to fish there, they go to relax there. And so we want to keep those places, and that's just one place. We want to continue to revitalize a lot of areas so people will stay in Mobile to continue to encourage our people to stay here because it's, we have recreation, we have fun, it's just, we just want to be able to stay here in Mobile and make it a better place. And we, I almost want to start, make it a better place and all of this stuff, but what I'm saying is, we are making an effort, and we want to continue to make this effort, and without funding from the city, we're Groundwork Mobile County, and it would be often kind of strange for our students to see that Mobile County... often kind of strange for our students, um, to see that Mobile County, we're at the parks, we're doing everything in between, but where's the support? You supported us in the past, and we're grateful for that, and we want to continue being a part of Mobile County, that environmental service to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sylvia Reed, followed by Reggie Hill.
Good morning, uh, good afternoon, good morning, real good morning. My name is Sylvia Reed. I live at 1783 Princeton Wood Drive West, Mobile, Alabama, and I'm here also to speak on the city finances.
Ms. Reed, can you drop your microphone down just a little bit for me?
Okay, thank you so much for that. Uh, I'm here also to speak concerning the budget use, uh, and everything, and I understand that the, uh, right now interest is, is to restore the civic center. And I spoke, uh, I think about a couple of, um, visits ago, uh, on, on the city budget and that I believe I do have a great interest in it. And I, I believe after seeing a lot of Mobile that, uh, the focus on spending should be truly on housing. Animals are good, but animals are not above people. Uh, and then there is a scripture I stand on, and I believe that all you all confesses in some way to believe in Jesus or God or something, but the, but the word says that except the Lord build the house, they, that labor, labor's in vain. And also, it is easy to spend someone else's money on your ideals and what you would like, but when it comes to your own money, you want to carefully, carefully spend that money. It's easy to spend the city's money, the people money, the people budget, and not consider your own ways. And most of you are, I, I can honestly say, all of you all sitting there are home, at home, you have very good comfort, but there's a lot of people that do not have the comfort you, you all have, the comfort that you all have. So it is unwise leaders, according to the scripture, that does not count up the cost properly when it comes to any kind of building, and when it comes to the people in need according to the word of God. Now, I believe also we have preachers on this board, at least one, somebody got to hear God, and I'm not going to put him aside when it comes to the people. Whether you, I don't care how people see me, but I, I want you to understand what my views are, and I've been in Mobile now at least 10 years without my own housing. And it is a sad thing to see this much money flowing in Mobile and people sleeping on the side of streets, but yet instead we want to hide them. I've been there, and I'm not going back there. So I believe in the name of Jesus as of this day. If you all do not hear the voice of God, then God going to deal with each one of you individually, and I am speaking on God's behalf today. I did not know I was going to speak this, but I promise you, I am speaking on behalf of God. And if you all ever, ever don't see me as who you, who I am as a woman of God, that is okay. It is okay. But as employees, employees of the people, employees of the people, you all are paid by the people. As employees, now everybody in this community should be in housing, at least a decent place before we build up any more entertainments. It's all about drunkenness, nudity, everything else except for people having a place to live and except for those you all think among the elites. Well, who are the elites? I would like to know. I don't know who like, who have the special ambulance service and the elite service, service and the elite hospitals and the elite places to go in. And then who is not the elite in the, in the city of Mobile? God is fed up with this mess, and I am too. Something else got to be done with the people's money beside building civic centers, housing have to go forth in Jesus' name.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, uh, Madam City Clerk. Citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. Budget approval time is here. Uh, thus is imperative, while not given the opportunity to be heard during the committee forum, um, that we make the sentiments of the public known during this hearing. Uh, unfortunately, in this chamber, uh, we have embodied this clocking in mentality rather than creating the time. Um, we are finding ourselves where we do either just enough to get people off our back or get them off the neck, or we're doing something just to respond when the matters have gotten too far out of control, um, rather than giving regard to our responsibility of creating the time of our city, using the ideas, uh, of the people right here, amplifying those same concerns and meeting the direct needs of the people, as Ms. Sylvia just mentioned. The taxpayer, as each of you know, um, I speak for, for residents and families in all seven of the council districts. So as I come before here today, while I'm, uh, very pleased to see my friend, Mr. Hunt, back in the chamber, uh, while he says he's speaking for himself, I have the privilege of representing people from all seven districts of the city of Mobile. And so in saying that, I would like to, uh, take on a few of these issues just for your consideration as we move forward, uh, with this process, um, particularly fiscal year '23. It was amazing to me that we heard so much of this last week about balancing the budget. Now, it's amazing as well how much money we have, but yet we see what are things that have been added in and, and taken out, but yet we're throwing in balancing the budget. Now, it means to me what we heard as well, while things that have been eliminated that are actually of social necessity. We can still balance the budget while the needs of the people are for not, while the needs of the people are putting on the back burner. So we still have this idea of balancing the budget. So I want to get some clarity in that, how are we actually balancing the budget? Are we balancing what we're catering to, what may be an elitist structure, as we heard before? Um, paying for raises two times. While I believe it is very imperative that we look out for those people who provide the service of the city, is it necessarily in the best time or interest of the public to put that additional money in the upcoming budget, when this was something that was supposed to be taken care of this time? Let's look at, uh, the sales tax majority. What does that mean? That means a five-year-old can go and buy a stick of gum, or a millionaire can go and have a shopping spree. We're still paying the same bracket based on what it is of our economic status. So if the majority of our resources that we use to spend money in the city comes from sales tax, we need to be ensuring that the needs of the public are being met. This is very simple. It's not rocket science. Nearly 40% of our budget is going to PS, public safety. Public safety, you all. I'm going to say that one for, for next week. Um, tearing down houses, engineering, planting trees. We don't really have a serious, uh, approach on how we're going to get to this. I hope this is going to be expressed as we move forward into approving this budget, as well as the terminal. We're going to spend, what, about 60, excuse me, $691,000 for something that's not going to be here for an entire year? $691,000. All right. So we're going to move on to the administration increase, and this actually happened with the terminal as well, where these people were unable to meet their budgets. Yes, we have organizations who have met all the criteria, who filled out all the paperwork, have all the liability insurance, and we talking about $1,000? A thousand? But we going to put nearly a million dollars two times? For people who are unable to meet their needs, when we righteously don't even know what benefit or service they're going to be providing to the public? One million dollar increase to the Mobile Area Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Protection, or projection, excuse me. These are things we have no idea about. And so this is my question, because listening to this finance committee meeting last week, we're potentially spending 1.25 million this year and another 1.25 for Topgolf in the upcoming budget. There was, there just wasn't some clarity in there, so we, please specify what that is. Is that this time around or is it the next time around? Is that projection a part of what the chamber is doing, or this is some additional type of money? Um, we have no plan for drainage. Rain five to 10 minutes here. Every district is impacted. The quote from the meeting was, "We deal with major pop-ups." Please look at this as we move forward. These performance contracts, I believe this group is well-deserving, there are many others. Time will not permit me to comment on all the matters that are before, but please know that we're going to continue this next week. Um, it's just unfortunate that we say to start in April, we're here in September, but the citizens get two weeks to talk about our money. Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Is anyone else present that would like to speak on the, um, on this particular item, public hearing? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of... Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Elizabeth Chippilish.
Good morning, council and staff.
Morning.
Here to talk about the homeless crisis, really the humanitarian crisis, particularly in Tillman's Corner. You know, this morning, we heard from, uh, or the, the city recognized two groups, worthy groups, uh, that need recognizing. These crew, groups, uh, advocate and provide support for the mentally ill, for the drug addicted, and the suicidal. Did y'all know that in the camp in Tillman's Corner that the homeless advocates cleaned up, uh, two weeks ago, at least four homeless people have died in those camps? One from suicide, and that gentleman's father and sister showed up to help clean up the mess, and other people have died from drug addiction. So when the homeless community found out that this eviction of the, um, Tillman's Corner camp was going to take place, we got together, I drove around Tillman's Corner and asked the homeless, "Do y'all want to come and help clean up this camp?" We had 32 homeless folks show up and work their butt off for three days. There were 16 homeless advocates that came. You talk about mental illness, suicide, drug addiction, these people in the camps in Tillman's Corner have no access to these resources. The people in the camp behind Lowe's have no telephones, no address, no one goes out there but people to give them sandwiches. So how do we solve this problem? You know, the problem's not going away. Criminalizing the mentally ill is not morally right, and it's counterproductive. It only exasperates the problem. So what I'm going to propose is that the city partner with the homeless advocates, the people who know these folks. We desperately need day rooms throughout the county, CMs downtown Mobile, Tillman's Corner. We had a meeting in Tillman's Corner a week ago to form a homeless coalition. If you could partner with us to get a small space that would be open every day, that would have volunteers there to tell these folks about rehabs. You know, we took two guys, put them in the truck from this camp and took them down to Waterfront Rescue Mission. They are in rehab now. Four of the men had no driver's license. If you don't have a driver's license and you don't have 36 bucks, you can't work. You can't get out of this situation. People, the volunteers, the resources are there to help. Please consider partnering with us to be an answer to the problem. Appreciate your time.
Uh, thank you. Chief of Staff, um, Barbara, since Anitra Henderson is gone, who working with the city now with the homeless?
We've actually got a team working on it. Um, Jamie Roberts certainly plays an integral part. Casey Callaway has taken the liaison lead as far as dealing with the nonprofits, and of course, Keisha is intimately involved in all of that process.
So in a question, should we just ask Casey or Jamie, or, I mean, as far as then, you know, information such as citizens may have questions, who could they really just, the point of entry? Yeah.
I mean, you, you have a great relationship with Keisha. Keisha can get you the answer. Some of it would be in Jamie's, as, as far as dealing with housing for people that are in need of housing. Some of it that deals with services are more in Casey Callaway's, um, kind of realm, uh, but Keisha, I think, would be able to get the right answers from wherever you need to get it from. And some of it is just going to be directly from our service providers, like Housing First, that we'd have to go to to get answers.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Um, just curiosity, uh, the cleanup, was it a cleanup in the camp remained, or was it a cleanup in the camp totally taken away? Was the camp totally removed, or was it just a cleanup? Yeah. How many people were there before the cleanup?
Thank you. Before the, um, cleanup, there were, uh, five living there with tents. One of them, an elderly gentleman, again mentally impaired, uh, had been there, um, for over eight years. There's, uh, a group that come and go. We, um, were able to identify a intellectually disabled and addicted pregnant woman, no access to resources. And because we were in there, we saw her, and we were, we're in the process of working with the Child Advocacy Center, DHR, and, um, homeless, uh, healthcare for homeless to get that child protected. Um, again, these folks do not have access, and if we can give them access to the resources, it's going to decrease the crime rate because desperate mentally impaired people do desperate acts.
I was, I was just curious to the administration, if it had been maybe hundreds of people there, where did they go? Is, is, was my next question, but it seems like if there were only five, she's explained where three went, and she said that the two remaining are there, and basically it was a great cleanup. Uh, again, my response to our homeless, uh, uh, opportunity, as I say, and not problem is, is that when they're moved, we've got to create somewhere for them to go. Uh, and talking about our budget again, you know, we've talked about our budget, uh, with $132 million and roughly $40 million, uh, for our rainy day fund, but, uh, ordinance only says that we only have to have, I forget what percentage is, maybe 2% or 3%, which comes out to $6 million a year, but we personally, or as a city by privilege, holds the remaining amount of money, uh, going forward. Uh, let's try to create a line item in the budget to where we can create a place, uh, where we are providing a resource, uh, for the homeless. I think this is going to become a major driving issue in our community, in our society. Uh, we have some property and some ideas in a few places, uh, but we have to do it in a manner that's, uh, uh, correct and creates a little bit of equity in the revitalization of areas that we have coming forward in the near future. Um, it's a great idea. I look forward to continuing to work with you guys, but again, in order to really make this work, we have to have somewhere for them to go.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
The reality is, we do have places for them to go. We've got 456 household, uh, beds for folk without children. We've got 468 additional beds with children. These are never full. Here's the issue. I've gone out and talked to homeless in my district, over half- Over half of the homeless that are out there don't want to go anywhere. They will not assimilate to any of these facilities. They don't want to seek it out. They don't want to accept the help. They don't want to go get help. And there's your problem. We have about twenty-eight organizations, nonprofit organizations in this city, that are doing their best to reach out to these members, homeless members of the community, in, in providing assistance. So saying they don't have access is also not true. They do have access, and they're being granted access. Is it long-term healthcare? The, the long-term mental healthcare is a gap. That is a problem throughout this nation. It's a problem throughout this state. It's a problem in this city. And it's one that the state legislation has been working on and will continue to work on, but that's not going to go away overnight. The other side of this coin also, I got an email last week from two single females who were out walking their dog and walked up on a homeless gentleman in a park. Scared the death, scared the life out of them. They have a right to feel secure and safe in our community, and that needs to be addressed. We've got homes that have been, had to be vacated from the fire department because homeless camps were starting fires in a forest outside of Providence Hospital area for fire alarm because they want to have these camps, and they will not move. They will not go anywhere. So this is an issue, and, and the reason why some states have started creating laws to, to police this up is because it is a safety and security issue. And we do have a right to make sure that the citizens do have the ability to feel protected in their community. So this is not an easy solution. It's one that we will continue to work on and have been working on, but at the end of the day, those that don't want to assimilate, that don't have a mental health issue, cannot just go where they want to go, when they want to go, how they want to go, and not adhere to the societal norms that exist. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, for the lack of time in conducting business, I think we should, um, have this conversation at another time and another place when I can really say what I want to say.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Jabari Dickerson.
Speaking of homeless, I'm homeless, but I got a program that I developed called Seize That Growth while I was in prison. I did twenty-three years.
Could you give us your full name, please?
My name is Jabriki Dickerson. Jabriki Dickerson. I, uh... Give me a minute, man. I'm a, I'm a prophet, okay? I'm like Jeremiah. I'm a weeping prophet. God's spirit on me, been on me whole while I'm here. And, um, we at war right now. What come behind war? Famine. You read the book of Revelation, famine is coming, okay? We finna heat up, y'all. China is making artificial suns, if you don't know. Um, there are sentient beings here on earth right now, if you know anything about the Galactic Federation, and, uh, these sentient beings are fallen angels giving instructions to our leaders, okay? And, again, famine is coming. And, in two thousand fourteen, God gave me visions about the Great Tribulation and what's going to happen going up until the Great Tribulation. And I s... I see people eating their own kids. I see, I see the government turning on us. I see all kind of this wicked stuff coming. But Mobile can be the breadbasket of the United States of America, and I mean that because we got rain here that's different from other areas. We got many water sources here. We got a lot of fertile land here. Please let me speak. We got a lot of fertile land here. We got a lot of homeless people with no job. We got a lot of, uh, 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 ex-convicts like me with no job, you know? And I got a plan to bring greenhouse, industrial-sized greenhouses into urban areas for people to work, also apiaries and locust farms. Locust is a very, they're very high in protein, and we can sustain our bodies off of locusts and honey and plant food. Now, also, seize that growth. There are other business ideas that I have for seize that growth, but what I'm telling you is that if you were to give five million dollars to seize that growth, go over the business plan, and critique it to however you want, okay? I promise you, seize that growth will pay off. All the other things that you give money to don't pay off. They don't do nothing for the hood, they don't do nothing for us.
Um, Mr. Dickerson, I had to cut you off, but, uh...
No problem.
Yeah, just go ahead and email us your progressive ideas.
I, I, I sure will, but...
All right.
This, this is all I got, y'all. I'm home.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Dickerson.
Just need to know.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Walter Moore, Jr.
Mr. Moore. Madam Clerk.
Cedric Miles.
Cedric Miles, thirteen, thirteen-twelve Forest Cove Drive, Mobile, Alabama, three-six-six-one-eight. Uh, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I just, I begin, I'd like to begin by commending the city Parks and Recreation Department on their all-star after-school program. I know how important that is because I actually had a, uh, yeah, friend of mine's and I, we volunteered at Harmon Recreation Center from nineteen, about nineteen ninety-six to twenty-ten, tutoring, letting, letting kids in the neighborhood bring their, bring their homework over there, and we helped them with their homework. We didn't, it didn't matter whether it was first grade or twelfth grade, grade, we were there to help them. And the thing, what I like about the program that they're offering now is that I see the ages are from five to sixteen. We always see why they want to help the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. Well, a lot of times, by the time they get to middle school, it's too late. We, we, we have to get them while they're young. We have to help them while they're young, and that's why I like this program. However, I see why Harmon wasn't included as one of the sites for this program. And to me, Harmon was the perfect place to have, uh, a site for this program because it's in the same block as George Hall Elementary School. And then Williamson has, uh, middle schoolers and high schoolers, and Williamson is within a block of Harmon. So I, I know y'all might not know because it may have not been a city council decision, but I like to know what was the criteria in choosing a, uh, the sites for this program because it seems like Harmon would, would have been the perfect place because of proximity to the schools in the area. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Smith, she's coming down. She's over Hartson Rex, and she may be able to answer some of those questions.
Okay. Good morning. Uh, thank you for the question. Good morning. So actually, um, Harmon has been the only community center with an after-school program. Um, Light of the Village, um, yeah, Light of the Village is a church program that comes in, they've been coming in for years, and they do Monday through Thursday. So this is actually our first time doing after-school program at all of the other sites. Harmon had an after-school program actually before I started, very well-attended, um, they use the back area, um, behind the gym, um, and they bring staff and they interact with the kids, so they do have a program, so that's why we didn't put one there because it's already one established.
Okay.
Mr. Miles, if you could just talk to her after the meeting, that'd be great. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Pan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, one thing I do agree with Mr. Dickerson's statement, that Mobile can be the example. Um, we see here, we talked about the budget, we got ground, uh, work here. I think we have to figure, dealing, um, dealing with homelessness in our city, I think we need to have a plan for our surplus. I think we have that money there. We hear in different situations that are coming in our city. These are great organizations, but I think it's a plan need to be put in place. Sometimes when you don't know where the money is going to go, and you have concerns about is anything going to get done? But I think having a plan in place and saying, okay, this is what we're working on, this is what we're going to look at, or maybe some type of process, but I believe that Mobile could be that example to solve these issues. I hear sometimes, and I'm listening to council meetings, sometimes we kind of go back and forth. We, you know, we have good debate. The truth of the matter is that we need to get some solutions to the problem. All of us make valid points, but a lot of times it seems like we're going against each other, fighting against each other. We got to get to a place where we move Mobile forward, and the only way to do that is to have a plan. We know it's issues, and I agree with my colleagues about, we have a lot of beds available, but then do the homelessness, the, the people know how to get there? Do they have the resources? And I believe that's the gap. We got to find those gaps, and we need a plan so we can make sure that we mean the needs and serve in our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pan. Madam Clerk.
Reggie Hill regarding Resolutions zero-nine-seven-four-four-sixty-seven-five-five-through-seven-six-one.
Mr. Hill.
Thank you, um, Madam City Clerk. Is there a, a issue?
Go ahead, Mr. Hill, you can start it.
I was just wondering, concerned with me having additional time. Okay, um, I'm going to address these matters, zero-nine...
Name and address, please.
Reggie Hill, one-thousand-seven-Centus Street, my apologies. Uh, zero-nine-seven-four-four, uh, six-zero-seven-five-five-through-seven-six-one, and zero-nine-seven-seven-seven. Um, let's start with zero-nine-seven-four-four. Uh, is this the same grant that was allotted, I would say, about, uh, two to three years ago regarding the, the Tiger Grant? Is anyone able to answer that, please?
Go ahead with your whole statements, Mr. Hill, and then with...
Well, it's a question. That, that, that's not a statement, sir.
Well, with all of your questions and administration, they calculate.
Okay. Um, the reason, um, well, never mind, because that, that would then be a statement and a question. That's why you usually ask them separately, but moving on. Um, I know it's probably like beating a dead horse, and you're probably, uh, very fatigued, uh, with me coming back and asking about this over and over and over and over and over again, but, uh, I'm going to have to do it, and, and primarily because I've learned in the recent weeks and months that it's not just my organization that's dealing with this. We're seeing that it's so many organizations all across the city of Mobile that are in the same inconvenience. Now, the only difference is, our organization was approved in March of last year. Now, some of these groups who are getting their things approved this year and still having to wait for the resource to be allotted, I kind of understand where some of the frustration may be, but when you're waiting a whole year term, and you can't have any communication from anyone in the administration about what this is that's going on, that, that causes an issue. You should not be surprised that people are coming down here expressing that, and then it's a strong council forum of government, and no one up here has done any inquiry about this. So you can't just put it on them because this body who's approving it. So this last piece here, um, zero-nine-seven-seven-seven. Now, I may have read it improperly, um, but is there anything about the ARP resources that are going to be allotted within this budget? Is there anyone that can explain how that's going to be divvied out the next go-around? Uh, because it wasn't articulated in any, uh, of the finance, well, at the Finance Committee meeting or any other previous meeting. So is there anyone that can answer that question along with the, the other one that, uh, that was presented? And then I just want to say, uh, because the Finance Committee Chairman seeks us finding where we're going to remove the funding. I'm going to explain them more next week, but I think that we can pull between the terminal, the administrative increase, and public safety, a million dollars to go towards performance contracts for organizations that actually have data-proving solutions to improve the quality of life here in the city of Mobile. Thank you for yielding the floor. Is there anyone going to answer?
Just for public knowledge, Colonel DeLav, could you explain what zero-nine-dash-seven-four-four is, please? Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Was anyone going to answer the questions, though? Mr. Smart?
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Uh, that's a no?
He's answered the question. Now, Mr. Hill.
I'd like to be able to respond if he's going to ask the...
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you.
These are for...
Okay. I got you on the floor.
These are for, uh, replacement, uh, poles for our street signs and, and, uh, and lights. We buy them typically, we get them in bulk in about this kind of quantity, uh, as we need them.
Oh, this is for the Tiger Grant?
Rebuild Alabama.
Yeah.
I apologize. That's for additional work to be done on the MLK stretch of the Broad Street project.
The MLK portion of it?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
CIP resolutions held over twenty-one-seven-thirty-eight. Authorized contract with Southern Earth Sciences for twenty-twenty-two CIP citywide resurfacing.
Some move.
Second.
They're probably moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passed.
Resolutions held over. Zero-one-seven-three-nine. Authorized agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics to help the city identify and collect sales use, sales use tax and delinquent license revenue. Zero-eight-seven-fourty. Approved purchase order to global industrial equipment for cooling fans from this municipal garage. Zero-eight-seven-fourty-one. Approved purchase order to varsity brands holding for football goalposts and soccer goals for Dog River Crawford Parks. Zero-eight-seven-fourty-two. Approved purchase orders for fuel for wave transit. Zero-eight-seven-fourty-three. Approved purchase order to, uh, Tralient Holdings for online training services. Zero-nine-seven-four-four. Appropriate monies from the Rebuild Alabama Special Revenue Fund to the Tiger Dr. MLK Junior Avenue Broad Street Project. Twenty-one-seven-four-five. Authorized contract with Newman's Medical Services for deceased, deceased body transport services. Twenty-one-seven-four-six. Authorized contract with EMS Management and Consultants for Emergency Medical Services billing and support. Twenty-one-seven-four-seven. Authorized contract with Robert J. Baggett for oil-water separator replacement for municipal garage. Thirty-seven-seven-four-eight. Approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to drop off transit to operate a shuttle service. Sixty-seven-four-nine. Authorized settlement agreement and release of claims. Zero-one-seven-fifty. Authorized intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County, Alabama, for the development and expansion of the Mobile County Sports Plex.
Some move?
Second. They're probably moving second and in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, regarding zero-one-seven-fifty, which is an intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County, this is, uh, the city essentially making investment along with the county into the soccer fields and future aquatic center, and, um, I'm glad to see us make this partnership with the county, and I'm excited how well this partners up with previous investments that the city has made into this very area. Uh, it seems like this area is becoming more and more attractive as we, um, go through the year.
In other discussions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Gregory.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Reynolds. It's good to see the city and the county partnering on this for soccer and the aquatic center development. We had received emails from, uh, a number of people fairly recently asking us to, to please, uh, support and provide funding, and the council all knew that it was certainly in the works. So, um, I'm happy to see this happening because I think it's a really great asset, a great amenity for the entire city and region.
In other accounts.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
I'll echo my, uh, colleagues with zero-one-seven-fifty. I think this is a, a great initiative, um, teaming up with the county for the... I think this is a, a great initiative, um, teaming up with the county for the soccer fields and aquatic center. When you look at the landscape like, uh, Councilman Reynolds stated, that, that area is really turning in, into an entertainment area for the city. I do have concerns with the aquatic centers from some of the funding requirements and, and I would like the county, um, to keep us updated. If the administration could continue to work with them and, and communicate with them, uh, just to make sure that that is moving forward as we had discussed, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass it.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 37751 through 6761.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
Probably moving the second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules away.
37751, 752, and 753 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license for Saturdays at the Coop. For issuance of a retail beer, off-premises only table wine, off-premises only license to Mobile Oriental Market on Azelia Road. And for issuance of, of lounge retail liquor class two package store license to One Stop Shop on Hill Press Road. 58754, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean group 56. 6755, 756, 757, 758, 759, 760, and 761 are determining appropriations to Gemini Studios in Parliament, UJ Robinson Memorial Center, Senior Citizens, Citizen Services doing business as VIA, State Street Community Development Corporation, Country Club Estates Neighborhood Association, Sugar Creek Homeowners Association, and American National Red Cross serve a public purpose and approve payment.
Some move.
Second.
We're probably moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass it.
Resolutions being introduced, 01762 through 6780.
For council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Call for public hearings. 41781, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Medevac Alabama, Inc., to operate an ambulance service scheduled September 20th. 41782, call for public hearing to rezone property located at 712, 716, and 718 Dolphin Island Parkway from R3 and B3 to R3 scheduled October 4th.
Some move.
Second.
We're probably moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Six, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, hopefully everybody enjoyed a great Labor Day weekend and, and saw a lot of people out and about. Uh, so, uh, hopefully that, that was, um, a, a time for you to sort of refresh and recharge your batteries. Um, I don't know how many went to the South game on Saturday. Um, it was very well attended. We could do a lot better. Uh, South put a beat down on Nickel State, so that was good to see. Started off on a very strong foot, looking forward to other games. The next one coming up, the next home game, will be a City Appreciation Day on the 24th, I believe, of September. Look forward, they've got tickets. I think all of my colleagues have sent out links. They're giving free tickets out to whoever wants to go to the game and let's work on packing that stadium out this coming, uh, home game, 24th of September. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Reynolds, District Four?
No announcements.
Councilman One? District One, excuse me, Councilman P, I'm sorry.
You're good. Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we had the battle of District One, UMS Wright versus LaFleur. UMS Wright won, congratulations. Um, it was a great game. Uh, but also I received some emails regarding the animal cruelty in my district. If you know any cases of animal cruelty, please report it to 311 or our Police Non-Emergency Operator at 2512087211. Ask for the SRO number and you can send it to councilone@citymobile.org. Also, just want you to understand that the Mobile City Council is the legislative branch of government. We do not have power to direct any city employee. Matter of fact, it's a removable offense. If you have a situation that happened in my district, please share it with me so I can work on solving this problem. I also received, um, information, um, posts through social media. Speaking of a particular, excuse me, of a particular neighborhood in my district, I was saddened to see that because that particular neighborhood is great. We have a lot of great things going on. Um, so for people to make comments and say that it's happening all over this, uh, particular community is sad. It's not happening across that whole community. Um, I will always stand for my community. People can say whatever they would like about Corey Penn, but when you go against District One of the five communities that I represent, I would definitely go against anything that deals with that. So again, if you have any situation that is occurring, please let us know. We had a case this past weekend, we was able to work on it because it was reported. You have to report it. You can't go and make all these posts and then get mad when nothing gets done. That's not how it works. Please report it and we'll take care of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. District Two, Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. No announces, no announcements, but, uh, several quick requests. Uh, I have personally sent in a request for immediate action on Dolphin Street for a series of potholes, uh, one that was pretty big that it knocked the front end of an F-150 completely out of line. Uh, the address has been determined. Uh, another really close to Cathman Street, Inside Lane, westbound. Uh, Government Street at the Loop on the Inside Lane, uh, just before the Cannon, also coming back now, Government Street, eastbound, Inside Lane, just before Cherokee. Uh, these are not little holes, they're nice and deep. So as quickly as we can get someone to address them, I would really appreciate it. Uh, I know that Government Street is a state highway. Uh, hopefully that we can either make the response ourselves and get it done or get the proper people to, uh, address it. Secondly, uh, these potholes, when a municipality digs a hole and corrects anything underneath the street, there's an ordinance that states that if it is of such one size or another, then the adequate patch needs to be of a said size, meaning that if it's a hole that it's four by four, whatever, then we pay from either corner to corner or for, for how long. Uh, we need to make sure that the municipalities are standing on top of this because some of these holes are being caused by when, uh, another municipality, uh, not, not municipality, I'm so sorry, utility. Uh, when a utility comes and cuts our street and they're not doing a repair adequately, and I don't know if we're standing on top of this or not, but when a street is cut from one side to the other, that's telling me normally it's, uh, a utility company that's cutting into the municipalities right away. So we need to address those. Again, I've called those in personally myself. Uh, I've hit the one on Government Street, I think, at least once myself, so I know where it is after it was called into me, but let's please get those addressed as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. District Five, Councilman Dave? District Seven, Vice President Gregory?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to have any announcements, but since Mr. Carroll brought it up, the, the pothole thing is what I have been discussing and talking about along with what, um, Mr. Jones has been discussing as far as trying to put some extra funding into public works to take care of these things. Uh, what we are doing with potholes throughout the city is going and patching potholes and they do a great job. The problem is that we have so much rain that every time it rains just about, the asphalt comes up and we're back going to, again, patch the potholes. So what I was hoping is similar to what we make utilities do, which is to come in in a wider swath, you mill the road and then you pave it, you resurface it, which helps save the road in case that street won't be resurfaced for years, you save the street and you save public works, a lot of wear and tear and energy because after so many years you're constantly going and putting asphalt in these potholes at the same places over and over again. So it would seem to make sense that we would do something that would be more like what we make our utility companies do in order to save us some time and wear and tear on these streets. Um, and also a lot of those phone calls that we all get about the potholes. So, and no other announcements from District Seven. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory, and greetings to District Three. On next week, I will announce a series of additional meetings that we will have scheduled coming up very shortly, soon. Anything else from this council? Anything from administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Probably moving second and in discussion.